Welcome Vice Mayor and Council members, members of the public. I call this special meeting of the Albany City Council for December 9th, 2024 to order. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land urgently protected by the Confederated Villages of LaShaw. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney Tribe. Thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all than now make this their home. City Clerk, can you call roll please?
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Tiedemann.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
And Mayor Mickey.
Here. We'll move on to item three, Consent Calendar. On the consent calendar, items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City of Council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendation will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the City Council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member or a member of the audience requests removal of an item for the consent calendar. Do any of the council members wish to discuss or remove item three dash one? Seeing any council members, any members of the public that would like to comment or pull item three one? Not seeing anyone in the room, I'll look to see if anyone online would like to pull item three one. Not seeing anyone wishing to pull an item, I'll bring it back to council.
I'll move consent.
Seconded.
Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Lopez.
Yup.
Mayor Mickey.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
And Councilmember Tiedemann.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item four ceremonial matters, four dash one, Resolution of Appreciation of Councilmember Tiedemann.
Welcome back. A resolution of the Albany City Council in appreciation of Aaron Tiedemann for service on the Albany City Council. Whereas Aaron Tiedemann was elected to the office of City Council in November 2020 and served a four-year term as member of the City Council. And whereas Aaron Tiedemann has honorably and faithfully served the city as a council member, vice mayor, and as mayor. And whereas Aaron Tiedemann has represented the city by serving as appointee and/or alternate on several regional bodies, including the Association of Bay Area Governments, Ava Community Energy, League of California Cities, and the city's Police and Fire Pension Board. And whereas Aaron Tiedemann helped lead the city through the COVID-19 pandemic to address important community needs, including support programs for residential debt relief and rent relief, along with support programs for Albany businesses. Whereas Aaron Tiedemann thoughtfully helped modernize the city's mission statement, as approved by the Albany City Council, to read, Albany is committed to providing a healthy, safe, and accessible city, strive to lift every voice in our community. Whereas Aaron Tiedemann as mayor oversaw negotiations with UC Berkeley, resulting in the university agreeing to contribute $600,000 a year for 10 years, recognition of the city's services it receives without paying taxes, an unprecedented amount that improved Albany's finances, and in 2024, the first year of the funding was responsible for approximately for approximately half the operating surplus and contributed to long-term funding for enhancing firefighting equipment to meet Albany's current and future development. And whereas Aaron Tiedemann joined with Mayor John Mickey to serve on a City Council ad hoc committee, to meet with community members to develop a resolution of the City Council supporting an immediate bilateral ceasefire in Gaza, subsequently adopted by the council. And whereas Aaron Tiedemann also helped address housing needs within the city by working on a council ad hoc committee with Councilmember Hanson Romero to review and recommend appointments to the city's Housing Advisory Commission for ratification by the City Council. Whereas Aaron Tiedemann also helped further youth participation in local government, meeting with student community members, one result of which was the voters passing 2024 Measure V to lower the voting age for all Albany elections to 16 years old, and also representing the city as one of the youngest members of the City Council to be elected. And whereas Aaron Tiedemann worked to bring several ballot measures forward for consideration by the City Council and electorate to help support community needs. And whereas Aaron Tiedemann took the initiative to introduce consideration of an environmental, social, and governance, ESG, investment policy for the city. And whereas during Aaron Tiedemann's term on the City Council, the councils addressed a significant number of important issues, projects, and programs, including but not limited to the development of a city-owned parcel, or an affordable housing project of 62 units of 100% affordable housing, development of a specific plan for San Pablo Avenue, adoption of the city's housing element to help identify opportunities to increase housing within the city, habitat restoration and fire hazard mitigation planning for Albany Hill, citywide street light improvement planning, initiation of a street tree management plan, resolution of the City Council declaring a climate emergency, calling for urgent action to secure a stable climate, and critical bicycle and pedestrian pathway improvement projects, including the Jackson Bike Way connecting Albany residents within UC Village housing areas and neighborhoods serving commercial uses. Therefore, be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Albany hereby extends its appreciation to Aaron Tiedemann for his service as council member, vice mayor, and mayor of the City of Albany.
I'm gonna save my comments till the end. Often, we ask for public comment after all ceremonial matters, but I think tonight we'll make an exception. We'll open up for public comment for any of those who would like to, members of the public who'd like to say anything in appreciation of Councilmember Tiedemann.
Hello, my name's Sal Harkins. I'm here as a representative on behalf of Senator Jesse Adagene. It is my absolute honor to present this certificate officially to Aaron Tiedemann for his work in housing and leadership and dedication to the community in the City of Albany, a place where he grew up and knows very well. And you could come over here so I could officially write you this certificate. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public in the audience today that would like to say anything?
I hadn't really prepared, but I just want to say that my name is Jen Loy. I'm the Associate Director of Government and Community Relations at UC Berkeley, and it has been my pleasure and the pleasure of our office and the campus's administration to work with Aaron, and we look forward to working with you again in whatever capacity that we can. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone online who would like to provide comments? Not seeing any other public comments, we'll bring it back to council for comments or discussion.
I just want to thank you for your service and your time here, especially the year that you were mayor. I want to say I was very impressed with how tip-top you were on all the things. It made things so smooth and easy, and I just really appreciate your time and your service to our community. Thank you.
Aaron, I've learned and appreciate your willingness to talk to anybody on any side about any issue. Certainly something I can do better at. Thank you for that, and for working with such great care for those who are less advantaged in our community, and there's so much more, but we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Aaron, you know how I feel about you, but I just want to take this moment to publicly acknowledge much of the work you've done in the background to make this council what it looks like now. Your leadership and guidance while you were mayor, when three of us were like deers in front of headlights, definitely put us in a situation to know what the expectations should be. But as well, your advocacy for folks like me and John, particularly when we were on campaign slate together, and ensuring that there was diverse representation in Albany that the city had not experienced before in City Council. Then lastly, I think myself and certainly folks in my own household owe you a lot in terms of gratitude and appreciation because there is a little girl in the crowd today who, seeing that because of your collaboration, your guidance with me, when I was still, when I was learning how to write memos and such, you helped champion an idea that she had. And as a result, we became the first city in Alameda County to have an equal pay ordinance, and that's no small thing. And I think little things like that youth remember, and we heard during the proclamation about lowering the youth voting age, and I hope that your term on council has left an impression for many people, for many generations to come to emulate the way you conduct and carry yourself, and if there's way for us to, they're in good trouble in the city in the year ahead, I'm here for it.
I'll echo what my fellow council members said about Aaron. I think the leadership and kind of the model that you set for us as a council, kind of in the what, the why, and how a city should function, but also how the City Council should function, whether that's ending nearly every meeting before 9:00 PM, often before 9:30 PM, whether that was giving every person who wanted an opportunity to speak with you that opportunity. I will say that in my opportunities to work with you and talking with the community, I learned from you. I learned how to be even a better listener, even in those times when I did not necessarily maintain my composure as well as I should have. And I think the leadership that we, as a council, have seen from you is also reflected in what I have heard from the various mayors that I've met through the Alameda County Mayor's Group and through the East Bay Division of the League of California Cities, that your leadership was truly seen both by our council and by others in the community, and for all of that, all of my appreciation, and I hope that you will stay involved in local politics here in Albany, whether that be on a committee or commission in the future. And with that, Aaron, you requested that you have the last word, so.
Thank you, John. I'll try and be brief. It has been my immense pleasure and honor to serve my community for the past four years, and I'm very grateful to many people who made that possible, essentially the voters, and everyone in Albany who trusted me to represent them. I hope in my time on council, I've shown everyone in Albany a little of how much I care and how honored I am to be a part of this community. I also truly want to thank my colleagues on this council for engaging in spirited, upfront, and productive debate whenever we agreed, disagreed, or simply needed to get through the people's business. Our standard of discussion with this council has been higher than that of any other city that I know of, so I cannot say how much I appreciate the professional, candid approach my fellow council members bring to this work, especially in the face of the all-too太多 negativity that we routinely face as elected leaders. Finally, I want to thank our city staff, particularly our city manager Nicole. It is impossible to list every mountain moved by our incredible staff in my four years on council, but it has been my pleasure to work with them so closely. We are extremely lucky to have such dedicated public servants in our city. There are many, many things I'm proud of working on and accomplishing on this council, many of which were covered in the resolution earlier, and I thank you for receiving it, so I won't repeat them. I will say that I'm immensely proud to have given this role everything I have. I have never backed away from an issue because it was controversial, given anything less than my full and honest feelings or strayed from my own moral code. I'm proud to say that these traits were recognized by my colleagues across the Bay Area who gave me the chance to lead on two of our most important regional bodies. I hope that even those who disagreed with me at least recognize that I approached each issue from a place of honesty, willingness to listen, and overriding interest in our shared well-being. Finally, to look forward, in order to move forward our community, our nation, and people everywhere must make difficult steps to understand, empathize with, and release our preconceptions about one another. While no government or elected representative can take full responsibility for this work, I believe engaging with our government is one of the best and most effective ways to start it. So I will take this opportunity to encourage everyone to make their voice heard and do what they can, as I can testify that this work, while often frustrating and difficult, is immensely rewarding and worth every second. Thank you to everyone, thank you for listening. I know that our city will be in good hands going forward with our new mayor when he takes office, and the new council, who I will take this chance to be the very first to officially congratulate. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Tiedemann. Before we move on to item four dash two, I was hoping we could take a photograph with Councilmember Tiedemann. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to item four dash two, Ceremonial Oath of Office for Newly-Elected Members of City Council. Megan McQuade, Jennifer Hanson Romero, and Preston Jordan.
With the council member-elect, please join me in front of the zaias, please. You guys can face whichever way, if that helps. I want to start by saying welcome and congratulations to the council members, council member-elect's, Peggy McQuade, Jennifer Hanson Romero, and Preston Jordan. Please state your name one at a time from left to right when I state so. Now, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and please state your name.
Aye, Jennifer Hanson Romero.
Aye, Megan McQuade.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. And do you attest to the oath that you just took? May lower your hand now, and congratulations again.
Thank you, City Clerk. We'll open up for public comment. Would anyone wish to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone in the room, anyone online? Sorry, we did have one public comment.
Good evening, I'm Nikki Fortinato-Bass. I am the supervisor-elect for Alameda County District Five, and I just wanted to let you know that I came to see your three new members be sworn in, and I very much look forward to building relationships with each of you in the City of Albany and all of your residents and businesses over time. And congratulations, and hope that we have a fruitful new year and a strong working relationship. relationship.
Thank you. Not seeing any comments online? Any comments from councilmembers?
I will just thank the Albany voters for another opportunity to serve. It is a great honor of my life. Thank you very much.
I will echo that. It's wonderful to be back up here.
I will echo that as well, and I'm really excited to be here to continue to serve our community and hope to hear from as many people who want to voice what's going on, what their needs might be. Let us know. We're here for you, and we'll do what we can.
Just want to express congratulations to folks who were re-elected and newly re-elected. I don't know how to phrase that one, Peggy. But also, hopefully, folks in attendance on Zoom or what have you also recognize from the words of Aaron previously that we, for the most part, are very cordial council in this cohort. I don't think will be any exception, and I look forward to the community holding us all accountable.
I'll echo Vice Mayor Lopez's statement, that really welcome back the two re-elected councilmembers and Peggy coming back, sorry, Councilmember McQuade coming back to us on the council. With that, we'll close item 4-2, and we'll move on to new business, 5-1, City Council Reorganization. Last item, I get to start as mayor. With that, we'll, I guess, turn it over to staff.
Good evening, council. So this is the annual reorganization of the city council, where a mayor and vice mayor is appointed for the next year. The city council procedure and policy includes a city council reorganization appointment guideline, which is also included as part of the staff report. As you can see in the queue list attached to the staff report, Vice Mayor Lopez is the council member established in the queue to be selected as the next mayor and Councilmember Jordan as the next vice mayor. If both accept and the motion to make the appointment passes, then the reorganization process is complete, and then we have our next mayor and vice mayor for 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. Any council questions? Not seeing any council questions, I'll open it up for public comment. Not seeing any public comment in the room, I'll see if there's anyone online. Not, no, with no public comment online, we'll come back to the council for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I might want to revisit the process that, for a unique set of circumstances, all five of us voted on at various points. It has a feature whereby councilmembers who are re-elected are placed above those who are newly elected. There were two reasons for that. One of the reasons was to preclude a councilmember from ever getting to serve as mayor if they should so choose, which is a possibility with five council seats in four years, that they could be bumped down in their second election to a lower position. Another aspect of this was to assure that whoever becomes vice mayor has already had experience for a year as a councilmember. We are in a unique set of circumstances where neither of those obtain. And as for that reason, and as I have formed Councilmember McQuade last Friday in recognition of the election results, I do not accept becoming vice mayor. I defer to her as the candidate who received the most votes. That is if she accepts, of course.
I'm happy and honored to accept and grateful. Thank you, Preston.
A question for the City Clerk. Since Councilmember Jordan has elected not to serve as vice mayor and Peggy McQuade will serve as vice mayor, what is the order after that? Does that mean that Preston is second? Sorry, will be vice mayor next year when we reorganize? Or you go to the end of the queue, I guess, is the question.
I have the council procedures and policies up on the screen. I believe it's one of the number indeed, I'm sorry. If the number four, if the current vice mayor declines to be appointed, sorry, that's not the right one either. Six, should all the, should all councilmember in the queue declines to be appointed vice mayor? It's not right either.
I can answer. I know it's in there. The way it's written, in the event that a person in third position declines to become vice mayor, then they remain in third position. If the vice mayor should, which is not our circumstance, although we haven't, I presume it's not our circumstance, if the vice mayor declines to become mayor, then they go to the bottom of the queue in recognition that it was anticipated that they would take the position. So presuming Vice Mayor Lopez, that you accept becoming mayor and that you are appointed mayor, my understanding of the queue after this would be Lopez, McQuade, Jordan, Hansen Romero, and Mickey.
Yeah, may I ask a question? I thought that there was something about number of votes, so why wouldn't it be Hansen Romero before Jordan?
So I'm going by the procedure as we've written it. We can certainly revisit.
Okay, and I don't want to rewrite it tonight.
I think it'd be best not to get into that. Obviously, we have some work to do in that regard, but for the moment, that is what the procedure would, the outcome of the procedure.
Future agenda item, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Jordan. With that, I will look for a motion.
I'll motion to approve.
I will second. This is to advance Vice Mayor Lopez to mayor and Councilmember McQuade to vice mayor.
Thank you for that.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember, sorry, I gotta rewrite my list. Councilmember Jordan, yes. Vice Mayor McQuade?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Councilmember Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hansen Romero?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our city attorney is not here, but I'm going to take a point of mayor's privilege. And if a member of the public would like to say anything now that we have reshuffled, I'll offer up the opportunity again if anyone would like to say anything. Anyone online? Okay, not seeing anyone. We'll move on to allowing the mayor to take over his seat.
So this is what real power feels like, huh? All right. Proceeding with our new business, we have item 5-2, in which we will host a native prayer sundance song led by Joshua Perez of Navajo Nation. I'd be on it.
First things first, I want to acknowledge the Aloney people of this land, whose land, whose ancestral homeland we're on right now, you know, whose perseverance in the face of genocide is a testament to the strength of our people, the native people, the indigenous people. I'm honored to call Robin here a brother, an indigenous brother, a native brother, Mexicana brother. I ask that you put a circle of protection around this young man, this family, as they step up to give up themselves, to give up their lives to be leaders of this city. I ask you to protect all of their loved ones, all their ancestors be with them. I ask that you give them the vision and the wisdom to provide leadership for all the people of Albany, to address the many hardships that people have out there, people who are not as fortunate as us, to overcome the adversity that's before us during this time. I ask that you bless him and his family, his loved ones like that. I ask you to bless this council like that. I ask you to bless all of you like that, all your loved ones. And I just want to say that I'm honored to be here, be a part of this process, which you wrote. It's my privilege to be able to stand here in this way and be a part of the next chapter of your journey, you and your family, you know? And I ask that you be blessed with the strength and courage and the wisdom to take on this huge task this undertaking. So with that, hajana hachni, hajana hachni, hajana hachni, hajana hachni. I also want to acknowledge my Lakota relatives as I share this song.
Thank you, Joshua. To provide some context for what many of you witnessed our experience, that is what we refer to as a sundance song performed by several different distinct tribes. And we made sure to build appropriate blessings in order for that to be performed. And as more or less Navajo blessing, that we, as a council, do our job to be accountable to nature, the people, the ancestors, to the descendants. But we are barking on right now is something quite different, in the sense that we don't just have the first-ever Latino indigenous person holding the mayor's seat. We have a different form of representation that maybe this city is long overdue for. I say that not to take jabs at anyone, anything, but I think we owe it to a lot of people in our community and our society to do better, because this is more or less where it starts. This isn't where it ends. And so I think there's also maybe some confusion about why we particularly entertain, I wouldn't say entertain, allowed the blessing of a sundance song to lead us in our cohort of this council forward. For those who are unaware, I proudly acknowledge and breathe in my own indigenous roots, out of the Nahuan Parapetche. And those who aren't familiar, Google could be your best friend. I'm not here to give a history lesson. But I thank you. But I thank you, Joshua Perez, and everyone from Navajo Nation, and those from the Alone tribe as well locally, who are allowing us to continue the work of the original land stewards, to do right in the city, do right in our community. And at that point, any... Question? Counsel? Word from counsel?
Question.
Question from counsel? There we go. Question from counsel?
I'll just express thanks for experience, and thank you.
Okay, getting a hold of this. Power comes confusion. I'll now open it up for public comments. If anyone in the audience are online, has any comment? And do we, city clerk, do we have anyone online? Is there anyone in person that would like... You have three minutes.
Hello, Mayor Robin Lopez. Councilmembers, my name is Myra Padilla. I used to live in Albany a long time ago when I was a graduate student and lived in the village. I have to say that when I lived here, although it was a beautiful community, my son, who is a very dark-skinned young man, did not feel at home in this community. And Robin is a mentee who has grown into a friendship with me. And today, to see someone that looks like my son, who has had similar experiences to him, leading the city, makes me so incredibly proud. You really have come a long way. And our indigenous roots tell us that what we do today seeds seven generations forward. And so I am really excited to see what the council does moving forward to make things right for people that come from communities like ours that are normally marginalized. Just so proud. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We have any additional public comments?
Good evening, Mayor Lopez and members of the council. My name is Rochelle Nason, and I'm a resident of Albany. I'd like to join in thanking the mayor, the new mayor and his associate for providing us the opportunity to participate in that prayer and to be a part of that. I'd like to suggest this. I was a member of the council at the time that we took the very painful and difficult decision to remove the Latin cross from the Albany Hill Park. It was a, something that I think we all understood very well, needed to be done so that that hill park could become a place where all people could feel equally welcome regardless of their religious faith or lack of faith. Unfortunately, some of us, actually, I was personally sued, the council was... The city was sued with allegations that we were discriminating against Christians. And I'd like to suggest, since we have, the council has decided to open its agenda to prayer, that you consider inviting some of the people who were the most hurt when we decided to remove the cross, to come and offer a prayer of their own and have a little bit of a reconciliation of the people in this community. And frankly, to be very clear that there is no discrimination against Christians, that that was never part of this, never will be, and that Christians are more than welcome to hold ceremonies, as are Navajo indigenous beliefs, people of any faith or no faith, are all equally welcome to use the park. But I think that it would be, having entertained a prayer, I think it would be a good gesture by this council to invite perhaps Dorina Osborne and Kevin Pope and whoever still nurses a hurt and a sense of discrimination to come and offer their own prayer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any additional public comments?
My name is Melanie, and I'm the daughter of Robin. I just want to say that I'm very proud, even if I don't show it, that I'm very proud, and I'm lucky to have you as my dad, and that I love you.
Thank you for your comment.
Get out of here before I'll... For the record again, Nikki Fortunato-Bass, supervisor-elect for Alameda County District 5. I just wanted to offer my congratulations to you, Mayor Robin Lopez, as well as to our vice mayor in Albany, Peggy McQuade. Again, I look forward to building a relationship and working with all of you as well as the residents and businesses here, and want to say that my door is open. I look forward to community meetings, town halls, and listening and learning how we can work better with Albany as the county of Alameda. Thank you. Wishing you well.
Thank you for your comment. Not seeing any additional public comments. Allow me to recollect myself. Losing public comment. Is, our city clerk, is there anyone online? No, we're good. Losing public comment, bringing it back to council. Did I do that right? I did it right.
I just want to... It has been a pleasure to work with you over the last two years, Robin, and in everything that you do, you always are true to yourself, true to your ancestors, and true to your descendants. And I think that has been an inspiration, and I appreciate you bringing Joshua Perez here to give this song dance and to lead us in prayers for us as a community and for us as a council.
Just offered, who knew where we'd end up? When we met at LBL, I don't know what, 10, 15 years ago? I'm honored that you chose to come to Albany and that you let me assist you in your journey to this place now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I knew if I could trust someone who signs NDAs with me, I could trust you with politics. Councilmember Hanson Romero?
I'm excited to work with you for the next couple of years, and I can't wait to, and probably more, and I can't wait to see what we've got in store this year. I'm looking forward to many great things.
And I'll add my congratulations for being the mayor, look forward to working together. And it struck me as blessing was being said that for me personally, and probably for our community, it would be nice to have some more education as to traditions, history, whatever. Not necessarily at a council meeting, because we're kind of constrained with many rules, but perhaps some workshops to educate our community and broaden our knowledge.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And though we can't discuss certain things at this time because they're not agendized, I will just say in very general and vague terms that one of my goals as mayor during this upcoming year is to lead our community to a path of healing. I think this community and communities across the country have been through a lot since the pandemic has hit. And it has exposed a lot of wounds that many of us still endure. And it's shown that maybe there are some vulnerable communities that have been going through challenges that have, in the most part, been unheard, unseen, however you want to describe that. I think we certainly do have an opportunity to entertain what does healing as a community look like? What does holding space for different values, different creed, different experiences, different cultures? What did that look like? I look forward to interacting and engaging with community members of all walks of life, all experiences, to do that and to commit to that. I think originally I had something a bit more longer-winded to state, and those of you who are familiar with me know that I can get pretty long-winded. But I've explained to folks in my household, I think there's more power in silence. There's more power in what you don't say. And I think sometimes those are things you just learn, they're not necessarily things that are born with you or innate or intrinsic. And if there's one thing I can attest to my own father, who, you know, sometimes we have differences of opinions. If there's one thing I can attest to him, is that his act of silence sometimes is what helps speak volume to what needs to get done, or what shouldn't be said, or what should be said. Close this item out, just stating that I thank all the community members for attending and staying with us in this portion. I do wholeheartedly look forward to leading this city, both from what had been done by previous leaders, such as councilmember... That's weird saying. Such as community member Aaron Teederman. But also working on setting the framework and the blueprint for what leadership should look like for those who come after me. I think something that many folks, regardless of what your culture or your experiences are, are taught to, I know this is a cliche, but leave things in a better situation for those behind you. And I think that's a pretty common theme in many cultures, many households, what have you. So that is my plan, that is my goal. I look forward to a lot of the good trouble I can cause. And I will say to my council colleagues, "Welcome to the players' club." That closes out item five on the agenda. We now move to item six. This is so weird doing. I will join this meeting as your new mayor of Albany. Thank you. Councilmembers, will you join me in taking a photo below the dice really quick, please?